With the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda. Are there any alterations to that agenda this evening? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Three, which would be, excuse me, Agenda Item Number One would be, consider the approval of the minutes of the last regular council meeting that was held on May 28th. So the council does have the minutes. Are there any corrections?
Move to approve. Second?
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ to approve the minutes as they have been prepared. We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And a motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the Consent Agenda. We have the Consent Agenda Items on the screen, which include the Service Agreement between SMSU and Studio One TV, the Huron Road/Superior Road Reconstruction Project, the Acknowledgement and Agreement of the Services Agreement with American Engineering Testing, the application for an exempt permit for Holy Redeemer Church for an event September 28, 2019, consider the Amendment to the Fund Balance Policy, consider the Marshall Abatement Policy, the proposed changes, and consider the approval of the bills in the project payment. So is there any item on the Consent Agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of a separate discussion?
Number Six and Seven.
Any other item? If not, I would entertain a motion for the remaining items on the Consent Agenda.
So move. Second?
Motion by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Or, excuse me. We'll close the voting now. Motion passes. Okay. So we'll move then to Agenda Item Number Six. This was actually delayed from a previous meeting, so members had additional time to review. Glenn?
I'd like you to turn. It's page forty-two, I think, of your materials. Okay. First of all, a little bit, this is just a typing type of thing, but under F it should be one and two instead of A and B, because if you look up above E, it's one, D, it's one and two. So that needs correction there. But I was looking at the economic development. There are different economic development funds, and if you look at the annual report, you'll see some of those. And the fund that we're specifically concerned about is referred to as the Economic Development Authority Fund. And so I'm wondering if it shouldn't say Economic Development Authority Fund. And you could leave off the special revenue, but it's actually the Economic Development Authority, according to the annual report anyway. That's what the title we're using. The other concern I have is we're going from a fifty percent to a forty percent rule. And in our packet, it explains why we're going from fifty to forty percent. But what I had recommended is that we have language for that limitation that's similar to the Statement of Position that's put out by the State Auditor's Office, the Office of the State Auditor for the state of Minnesota. And, you know, the auditors every year in their report refer to the forty percent, whether we're meeting that forty, fifty percent test or whatever. And if you look at the Statement of Position from the State Auditor's Office, they actually use the words thirty-five to fifty percent of fund operating revenues. They use operating revenues, not budgeted expenses, like in our wording here. And they also have in their recommendation, no less than five months of operating expenditures. So actually, they're giving us two possible guidelines here. One is the thirty-five to fifty percent test, which we're going to use forty percent. But that's based on revenues, not expenditures, like we have in ours. The one that's based on operating expenditures says not less than five months. Well, if you do your math, five months, five twelfths is forty-one point seven percent, which is more than forty percent. And so it was my recommendation with regard to this, that the guideline that we use would be this, that it be no less than forty percent of the annual fund operating revenues, or no less than five months of operating expenditures. If we adopt that in our policy, it would be in line with what the State Auditor's Office is using as a guideline. Because if we do use the forty percent test, it's not, it's less than what the State Auditor's Office is recommending. And I think by having both of those options, one is based on revenues and one is based on expenditures, you know, that's probably an easier goal to meet. And it depends on the year. Some years, you might base it on revenues, some you might base it on actual expenditures. But the way we're approving here, this forty percent is not the same as what is being recommended by the State Auditor's Office. And so it was my recommendation, and I had forwarded this to Annette, I thought we should use forty percent of fund operating revenues and no less than five months of operating expenditures, so that we would be in line with the Statement of Position by the State Auditor's Office.
So there may be some input also from the Ways and Means Committee?
Well, what happened is I forwarded these recommendations to Annette and met with her before the meeting. And I guess I was understanding that they would, she would maybe have those ready for the meeting. At the meeting, these recommendations were not put forth. We just, basically, I thought we approved it based on certain changes being made. I think that's where we left it in the Ways and Means Committee. And I guess I thought these changes were going to be made, and they weren't made according to my recommendation. So that's why I'm bringing it up tonight.
I guess, sharing the Ways and Means, I didn't recall it quite that way, but that could be, just from clarification, Glenn, you're talking an "and" and not an "or." So both conditions need to be-
No, no, it's an "or."
It's an "or."
It's an "or."
It's an "or."
Exactly like in the State Auditor's Recommendation.
Right. An "or" condition. Okay.
Yeah.
Annette?
Thank you, Councilmember Bear Coller. We did discuss the day of the Ways and Means, so I didn't have any time to prepare that for the Ways and Means. And I did make the changes. And I reviewed it, and I also had our finance director review it. And we thought that it was simpler if we just went off of the expenses, because that's what we've always done in the past. And the example that the State Auditors give us, reference, always referencing the expenditure side and not the revenue side. And the reason that we're focusing more on the expenditure side is because the reason that we have the fund balance policy is to account for the revenue shortfall that we're having. So by having that reserve, we're going to be fine until we get to the June settlement of property taxes. And so that's kind of the angle that we were looking into, and we just thought it was simpler just to have that wording in there, as it kind of always has been, and kind of by the example that was set forth by the State Auditors.
The, I think, I was looking at this before, and I was thinking that in some of these cases, in the past, the way it was worded, I'm not sure we would have met the test always. And what I would like to do is, like I said, I don't know if the State, or our auditors for us have actually looked at this. I assume they did, but I don't think they're looking at the language close enough.
I've had discussions with them, and that's kind of, I took some of your suggestions also with theirs and some of ours, and we kind of just meshed them all together, and we thought we had kind of covered everything in there.
But I can pass this around. Here's word for word what's in the State Auditor's Recommendation. And these, this is not what we have. Our recommendation, or what you're proposing, is not the same as this one here. And what I want to do is, I want to make, we can go, the State Auditor's Office bases on thirty-five to fifty percent of revenues, and we're going to forty percent. And I have no problem with that. But I want to make sure we're meeting the minimum standards, and I'd like to see us in compliance with the guidelines that are set forth by the State Auditor's Office.
They're not standards or recommendations.
That's right.
And the city can adopt a policy-
Right. But if we're saying we're meeting their recommendations, we better meet those recommendations.
They're not-
And I'm trying to make sure that what we're saying is exactly what the State Auditor's Office is saying, because there is a difference between revenues and expenditures. And they're using revenues, and we're using expenditures, and they're not the same thing. The other area I have a concern about is on page forty-three. A couple of things there that, it, one, slight changes. It says twenty-five percent of annual operating costs. Well, it should say expenses, because enterprise funds have expenses, not expenditures. And there's a difference in accounting between a cost of something and an expense. And what we're doing is basing this off of material that was given us to Springstead. Every year, we look at this, and we set our wastewater fees and our surface water fees. This was put together by Springstead, and it's based on operating expenses. And they use the term operating expenses in this report. And so I think to correct it, we should say operating expenses instead of operating costs. And let me give you a simple example. If I buy a new computer for five thousand dollars, that's a cost. But if I use it for five years, I expense it at the rate of a thousand per year. There is a difference between a cost of something and an expense.
And I can, I can make that change. That's not an issue.
Okay. The other thing in that sentence is, it refers to the unrestricted fund balance. And first of all, these are enterprise funds, and they don't have fund balances. They have net positions, because they're using the accrual basis, not the modified accrual basis. And so I don't think we should be using the term fund balance there. And I don't think it's to be unrestricted, because again, I'm basing this off of the information that we receive from Springstead. I mean, they put this together for us and said, these are some guidelines when you set your fees every year. And what their worksheet shows is cash and investments. That's the guideline we should be using, not fund balance, but cash and investments.
There is a difference between the Springstead model and what our audit shows. I chose the term because that is what is in our audit, and that is what we go by for the fund balance. Now, the utility rate model, the one that you're looking at, is just based on what Springstead is labeling. It doesn't necessarily mean that's what we actually call it.
We're talking about two different things here. You're talking about the audit. I'm not talking about the audit at all.
Okay.
And so, this is, this is not from our CPA audit firm. This is from Springstead.
Correct.
And they're two different entities.
Right. But the policy references what our, what our audit guidelines are, not, not what our utility rate model is.
Right.
So I'm going to interject here. This is really a level of detail that should be discussed at committee level, at the Ways and Means Committee. And, you know, if there's, you know, this level of detail that is uncertain, and you as a member of the Ways and Means Committee, then this needs to go to Ways and Means.
And, and let me explain that. I did provide this to Annette before the meeting, and I even sent her files with, and I thought she was going to cut and paste, because that's what she said she was going to do.
And, yes.
I got to the meeting, and it wasn't there. And it was my understanding, then, that she was going to incorporate these suggestions into the final document that the City Council would see. So it's not like I'm trying to spring this out at the last minute. I wanted to talk about it at the Ways and Means Committee, but I assumed that staff had agreed to these changes that I recommended. And, and I found out that they didn't agree to these, and they agreed to some of the recommended changes that I made or proposed, but not all of them. And that's why we're discussing this tonight. Before we approve it, I wanted to make sure this got corrected.
But we also have a recommendation from the Ways and Means Committee that we also want to respect. So if that recommendation is not valid anymore, then it needs to go back to, to committee.
Just a quick admin question. Did I get a copy of that email as well? I mean, I don't remember seeing it.
I don't believe so. It was about an hour before the Ways and Means that were sent.
And I have no problems with going back to Ways and Means Committee. I think that's fine. I just thought, before it got approved tonight, we should be discussing this, because I do have some concerns about the terminology in this policy, and I want to make sure we do the policy right and correct. And I want to make sure we're consistent in the terms we're using and the way we approach this. So I would certainly recommend that I go back to Ways and Means Committee for further discussion.
Other input from the council?
You said, Annette, that you got the email about an hour before the meeting?
Correct.
And that's why I asked you, Councilmember. I don't care if it's an hour or a day. It should be, it should be several days.
Excuse me. I met with her at twelve o'clock. The meeting was at three o'clock, and I sent her the stuff. And, and when I left her office, she said, send it to me in an email, and I'll cut and paste it.
Yeah, just out of, and I'm not, and I'm not saying anybody's wrong here, but out of respect to our staff, I think a good twenty-four to forty-eight hours on information like that would be very good for our staff.
And I do apologize if, I had the impression that I was going to, and then after we had gotten it and we're reading through it, the changes that we had made, had, we had thought that, that it was for the better, and it better explained as to what was going on.
Right.
So I apologize if there was a little bit of miscommunication there.
Other input from the council?
Just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, and specifically from you, what was the recommendation from the Ways and Means Committee on this issue?
The Ways and Means Committee?
Basically, to approve it as you see it in the document.
So with all due respect, the Ways and Means Committee is exactly that. It's committee. And when one person, Mr. Bear Coller, when you say that you're saying they didn't take my recommendations, it's not your recommendation to make. It's a Ways and Means Committee. It's a committee of several people. No one individual gets to make a decision on this.
And I'm not saying I did. I wanted it to go before the Ways and Means Committee. I met with Annette. I thought she'd at least bring the documents to the Ways and Means Committee, so we could look at it, because I think those were important changes. I emailed her to her. All she had to do was cut and paste, or at least bring it to the committee, so we could look at it. She chose not to, and it was my understanding, then, that she had no problems with those recommendations. So I was under the understanding that they were going to be made. If they were not going to be made, we would have discussed it at Ways and Means Committee and would have voted. And I would have brought it up at Ways and Means Committee. I would have had copies available for everyone. But it was my understanding she was going to be bringing it to the Ways and Means Committee, and she didn't.
John?
I'll make a motion that we table this and bring it back to Ways and Means.
I'd second that.
Motion by John, seconded by Steve to table this and refer this to Ways and Means. As a point of discussion, I would, there is some time, this has been hanging out there for a while. So I would encourage the Ways and Means Committee, if at all possible, to meet prior to the next council meeting.
And again, Mr. Mayor, may I interject? I think that's a problem we couldn't find after our Ways and Means today. I think our next meeting is going to be July 9th. So, I mean, that would be my question, is that going to cause some, so we're, we're okay?
Okay.
We've reasonably got one scheduled then.
So by July 9th, we should be able to have enough. Yeah.
Greg?
And I think these are great discussions, and I appreciate the effort that Councilman Bear Coller put in here to make sure that the language is clear. My only request is, is that I personally, I mean, I think when we have these, I think bringing them in front of the council and having these debates out here and bringing staff in front of the public and, and, you know, kind of making implications that we have of not doing things and stuff, I believe we owe the respect to our people to keep that maybe a little bit more one-on-one. And within the committees, I feel bad that we bring our staff in front of the council and these types of efforts. And I, I understand the value that you have in this, and I appreciate that. But I don't know how soon you recognize the fact that it wasn't what you wanted. But I often wonder if that could have been done earlier today and brought forward. I just feel bad that we bring our staff in front of the council and the public and, and kind of take it apart like that.
First of all, like I said, I brought this to Annette before the meeting, and I'm not doing anything to be disrespectful here, but I want things done right, and there should be accountability. And again, I was on the, on the impression that the recommended changes would be okay and would be approved, and I was hoping that they would have been presented to the Ways and Means Committee. So there's no effort on my part to embarrass anybody. It's just to make sure we do things right. And, and I think the action of sending it back to Ways and Committee, Ways and Means Committee is the correct action, and that's what should happen.
Sure.
Before we vote on this and approve it, I thought I should bring up these issues.
And that's happening, but I think you're missing my point.
Sure. And you have a point?
Well, I just want to say that I probably wouldn't have helped in a three-hour time span, because I don't look at my email constantly. But it, it might help to include me, too, because, you know, when you talk about accountability, I mean, she is a direct report, and I have to make sure that the staff are, are doing what they're instructed to do. And that might help next time, too. And this is, you know, I've had other situations where there's council members maybe directing staff, and then, and then I'm not aware of it, and later on, I'm brought in, and then I have no idea what's being discussed. So that might help, too. But in this case, in three hours, I probably wouldn't have looked at the email. I wouldn't have had time. But anyway, I just kind of ask for that, too, because I can, I can help
Any other?
In certain situations.
Let me just say, too, I met with Annette before the Ways and Means Committee, instead of spraying stuff at the Ways and Means Committee with. So I tried to do the right thing of conferring with her. I didn't talk to you, because I didn't want to go over her head. I mean, this was her responsibility. This was her memo, and this is her proposal.
Yep.
And I assume that when I met with her, that she would share that information with you. I mean, she's your staff. She reports to you, and it would be my understanding that she would talk to you, that I would not have to go and talk to you also.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I call the question, please.
The, do you really want to do that, or can we just move to a vote? Otherwise, we have to have a separate vote.
Move to a vote.
Oh, move us to a vote? All those in, any other further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Agenda Item Number Seven, the City Marshall Abatement Policy. Once again, Glenn?
Let me just second here. Okay. One of the changes that's being recommended is that they're removing the provision, excuse me, that one of the conditions for receiving the abatement would be that the project is not financially feasible but for the use of tax abatement. And that was a part of our policy. It was approved by the City Council. And to me, it means that this government assistance is being based on, on need, on financial needs. And what we're saying is, we don't care if you have financial needs or not. We're going to provide you with these tax benefits. And I'm in favor of government helping poor people and those that are needy. But I'm not in favor of government assistance or handouts to wealthy individuals and wealthy companies. And so I like the idea that we have a provision in here that says that one of the conditions that they need to meet is that the project would not be financially feasible but for the use of tax abatement. I think it should stay in the policy.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address that, please. So I don't want to pick winners and losers either. And out of that, I don't want to pick losers. I want to pick everybody to be a winner. And that's what the abatement policy, in my mind, was meant to do. We're not taking city money directly and giving to them, although it does have, it does have to be considered in the levy, because they, they do the improvements, the property's revalued, it goes on the next year's assessments, or out of their next year's tax statement, tax collectible, they write the check, and then we rebate them. So we do actually give them a check. But we give that fairly to everyone who is improving their property and maybe putting four thousand or four million dollars into their property to gain two thousand or two million dollars in value. And we're collecting on the increase in value, not on the investment. Okay? Because they're not necessarily related. And it was an encouragement to encourage people to increase their values, which increases the net amount, even when we're giving them the rebate or the abatement, we're still gaining increased tax revenue to the city, and we're encouraging development, and we're encouraging growth in value. And I think that's picking winners. I don't think we pick any losers in this game.
Go ahead.
Steve, did you?
Well, my, my statement was just going to be kind of following along that. You know, we talked a lot about this at the, at the EDA. And when I think about what we're doing with this policy, the Amazon warehouse comes to mind. I mean, what cities gave that? Everybody's fighting for it, and they're all giving them whatever they can to draw that center to their main, to their office, or to their space, they can build there and provide all those jobs. We need to realize that we are competing, we're competing globally, really, for businesses. I mean, the greatest example is TruShrimp. Where are they building? Across the border into South Dakota. Why? Taxes. Plain and simple. Taxes. If we can abate some of the taxes to entice people to come to our great community, why not? Why not? Because any growth is positive growth, and we will make money on the incremental increase. That's my feeling.
Jim?
And to carry on, like you said, Steve, you know, and Glenn, when you say, give the wealthy people, when a business is investing three and a half million dollars, I believe that's, but the new truck center being done over by Cross Base, three million dollars, that is a risk they're taking. Yes, that person has to have money to get that loan, plain and simple. You know, but let's give them some incentive to invest that three million dollars, or else they may not even invest it. They could, in two years, be bankrupt. That wealthy person, as you call him wealthy, could be broke. Businesses, and I'm a business owner, we lay our lives out there every day to invest in the communities we live in. And we invest a lot of money. It's nice to get a little bit back.
The, Mr. Mayor, I think we also have to take into consideration, you know, again, with the, with the abatement that we recently approved. Sure, it's a three million dollar, four million dollar expansion, but we talked about the number of new employees he's going to, he's going to attract. So he's going to attract eight, ten new employees. I don't remember the number exactly, but those employees, we're going to encourage them to live in Marshall. We're going to encourage them to build a house in Marshall. We're going to encourage them to buy their groceries in Marshall. So again, that's that economic growth that we probably won't see in the tax rolls. But we probably will see in the tax rolls if they buy houses and they start paying taxes. So again, I, Mr. Bear Coller, I agree with you, but I also, I disagree with you, because you got to take the domino effect of what happens down the line. I mean, again, we're giving a fifty thousand dollar tax abatement to the truck center. Over the course, we're going to capture that back many times over, I feel. Just two things. One correction. I think the TruShrimp is in South Dakota, partly because of the environmental problems, regulations. Isn't that part of it, too?
That's one of their contentions. But, and we're not here to debate that.
Right. But the other point I would make is this. We're assuming in all these cases that the development would not take place but for the abatement. In a lot of cases, if not most cases, they're going to expand. They're going to do things, even if we don't give them the dollars from, you know.
Not in Marshall. That's not necessarily true.
We're assuming that the only development that takes place in Marshall is if we give them incentives. And there's a lot of businesses that come to Marshall, industries and other retail businesses, that come to Marshall without any kind of government assistance. So-
John, you have a point?
I think that the assumption that unless we give them government assistance, they're not coming, I don't think that's a true statement.
Yeah, just, I would say I respect Glenn's opinion on this. In this case, though, we are doing this purely, in my mind, when we started this out, as an incentive, independent of need or whatever. We're trying to stimulate growth and business in Marshall. And if it's somebody that's financially capable or not, either way, we're trying, be fair, give it to everybody. And, you know, this is, this is an incentive.
It's not necessarily but for.
And I guess I would proceed with making a motion that we pass this proposed change.
Seconded motion by John, seconded by Jim for the motion. The only discussion that I would add is, the policy also has each proposal coming as a, before the council. So there is the opportunity for a hearing on every one of the proposals that will come forward. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Will be, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
To approve it?
Oppose.
No.
So you have his no vote. The motion does pass. Okay. So we will move then to Agenda Item Number Nine. Agenda Item Number Nine is Consider the Acceptance of- Agenda number nine is consider the acceptance of our courts, our future award for the basketball court refurbishment at Independence Park from the Minnesota Timberwolves. With us tonight is Preston Stensrud, who, our superintendent, who also has also worked with this grant application.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm just here to kind of give you guys a little bit of an update. You've probably saw, I think it was in the paper, it's been on social media, there's just been talk out in the community about it. But we applied for this award or gift through the Timberwolves beginning of April, I'd say. It went through a nomination process, and then they picked three candidates from four regions in the state of Minnesota, and that went on their website as a voting, open voting, you could vote every day, the community, more you shared, you can vote all over, whoever you want to, can vote for whoever. But Marshall ended up winning our region, the south region, and we have started working with the Timberwolves and C&amp;C Courts out of Burnsville, and then it's also sponsored by US Bank. I did just find out today, we have refurbishment in there, it'd actually be a total new construction. They will tear out the old basketball court entirely, all the concrete, and pour what will be a 75-foot-long by 45-foot-wide basketball court, real close to full court. Right now, we have 36 by 36, pour all-new concrete, new hoops, and then put on what's called the sport court, finish similar to, like what's on pipe-stone basketball courts on the corner of 23 there. Not sure total value, but it's very significant, it's up probably close to $100,000. They're using local contractors for excavation and the concrete work. The guy from C&amp;C Courts is estimating a seven-day build time. He did say this will be the biggest project that the Wolves have done in the state in the last four years, and we'd like to incorporate it into kind of the kickoff to sounds of summer.
It would be complete by that time?
Yep.
Weather permitting.
Yeah, weather permitting, so August 15th is the community unveiling that they've scheduled, based on what works for the Timberwolf staff. So they'll come to town and do a ceremony and do some on-court activities with players and trainers and stuff, so it'd be pretty cool for the community. We have absolutely no cost, it's just, they build it, they pay the C&amp;C Courts, and they give it to us. So go pretty much where the existing court is, other than, it's obviously significantly larger, so we're going to have to reposition it, but they'll, it'll all get tore out, and we can accommodate as necessary, and then we're going to raise the court up so water would drain better than it does currently. So, just looking to kind of have acceptance to move forward, and as more information comes, I'll keep you guys informed, and then, of course, you'll be invited to the community event for grand opening, whatever you want to call it, so.
Well, congratulations, and thank you, Preston.
I move acceptance.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion on the motion?
I have a few questions. Do you know what the life of this surface is?
Not entirely, but I would guess 15 to 20 years. It's a composite material, it's about 5/16ths to 3/8ths thick, and then they color and can do any design, so that printout that I gave you would be the design of what the court will look like when it's done. So they can put in, and we have to allow them to put in the Timberwolves logo and the US Bank logo, which I said, sounds good. So, I know I priced out years ago to do a sport court over existing concrete at Freedom Park, and it was like 45 by 45, or 50 by 50, and it was like $42,000 just for the surface, so.
You know, it's very nice that this is happening, and I congratulate your department for applying for this and for receiving it. You know, I guess, if I had any concerns, that, you know, once you get this, we got to maintain it.
Yep.
And certainly, it will be more expensive to maintain this long-term than it would just a cement court.
Correct.
And so, just, we need to consider that when we do something like this, that, you know, even though you get a free gift, you got to keep it out.
And the existing court hasn't had anything, still the original hoops from, I think it was 1988 when they were put in, so.
But...
We've far exceeded our input dollars, but yeah, like I said, 15, 20 years out, I'd say it's going to take either a $50,000 resurfacing or take it out.
Take it out.
Which I don't think we'd want to do, but...
Okay.
The other point...
But you've thought about the costs, so, thank you.
The other point is, there is a court there, but this will be of the size and of the condition that the utilization will be far greater.
Yep, we've talked about potentially doing like an outdoor league that we don't currently offer for sounds of summer. They do the Carter Strong three-on-three tournament at the middle school, he's going to do that out here now, and as a fundraiser for Carter Strong. So, yeah, and it'll get used way more, because we don't have a full court now anywhere outdoors in any of the parks, so I would say your activity there is probably going to be 25 times greater significant, so.
Russ?
Preston, will the court have lights?
So I talked with MMU, we actually have a security light pole not far from there, and they said by time we get to that, they'll upgrade that to the LED streetlights in position two to the court, so hopefully that'll cover it, if not, we can add another pole.
Because I commend you on Freedom Park, I know you've got those LED lights there for the volleyball courts, and they're really, really nice, so...
Yep, this would be the same, they said they'll take care of it before it's open.
I hope it just doesn't encourage vandalism at night, but it might discourage vandalism if they're lit, yeah.
Exactly, yep, so.
Yep.
So we have a motion on the table, is Steve?
The one thing that I would like to say, I think this is just fantastic, from the Timberwolves and US Bank to do this to communities. It just gives so much back to the communities that end up supporting them, and I mean, let's face it, greater Minnesota, we go to games, but not nearly so much as a city, so I think this is just a wonderful thing, and I thank them for what they do for the public and the state, and to get kids into ball and play in ball, and this is leadership, this is the shadow of a leader organization, and I hope they do great.
Very good. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion does pass. We'll move then to the next agenda item, agenda number 10. This is the resolution that would create the 2020 City Complete Count Committee. Kyle Boxer, our city clerk, has done the background work on this, so Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, for your consideration, is the formation of the City of Marshall Complete Count Committee, the CCC. What we will be doing, well, first, I'll give you a little background on what the census kind of is in your background material. So, right now, or why it's significant right now to Minnesota is that, once again, we're at risk of losing another seat in the House of Representatives. So what that means is, your districts go from eight to seven, and those districts are estimated to grow to 100,000 more individuals in each district. We can kind of break it down, also, what the finances are and why that's important. So, in the fiscal year for 2016, a little over $15 billion was given to the state of Minnesota for different programs, such as $660 million for highway plan and construction, Medicaid, student loans, Pell Grants, tons of USDA programs and HUD programs. And how that continues to break down is, over the 10 years, approximately, one person that's counted in the census is equal to $15,000 over those 10 years, so in federal dollars, what that equates to is a family of four, is essentially 1% of our, equals 1% of our levy, but broken out into $15 billion in one year. So why is that important? It's important to get the count, to get an accurate count, a hard count, and that's why the CCC is forming, is to go out in the community with different community leaders, to form this group with community leaders, and to reach those hard-to-count people, such as minorities, such as snowbirds, those types of people, and just kind of inform them, give them the correct information on what is happening, and it's really important for Marshall to get an accurate count for the reasons listed and for more, so. If you have any questions, I can do my best to answer them.
Well, Kyle, I absolutely agree with the importance of this, and thank you for your work on this. I would add to that, many times undercounted population in our community is the SMSU student population.
Yes.
Are, sometimes are confused, like, do they participate here, or don't they? And they should, because this is where they are, will be sleeping on March 31st.
Majority of the time, yep. Yep, so it's a majority where you spend your time, or where you're going to be on April 1st, on Census Day, so it's really important to, there's strong campaigns in this, we'll say, the snowbird states, Arizona, Texas, Florida, because they want the count when people go down there for the winter, they want them to...
Stay there.
To stay there for their count, while we want them here, because, well, for many reasons, so.
And I would add to, you know, one of the justifications or the reasons or the reason why an accurate count is necessary is because this is the baseline data that is used for a number of things, and you mentioned government purposes, but there's a lot of private purposes, like, does a retail store choose to locate in a community? Well, that's based on the population and the potential customer base, and if we're undercounted, because we missed one whole portion of the population, and if we're undercounted by 10%, well, in Marshall's case, that's 1,400 people, so. Any other input? Glenn?
Yeah, one item is the municipal state aid system. 50% of our municipal state aid comes from population, so it's really important that we get a good count.
So, the, your recommendation is the motion to accept the formation of the Complete Count Committee?
To adopt a resolution, form in the CCC.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
Approximately, how many people would be on this committee, then?
Oh.
It's kind of up to what we did in 2010, I believe it was a large group, I want to say close to anywhere from 12 to 18, I think.
Yes, it was.
It was a large group, so I think we would try to, at least, that would be our top number, if we could do it a little smaller, maybe, but it's important to have people in every corner of the city, to be able to reach out to every group.
And so, we've done this before?
Yes.
And did we feel like it was very successful, what we did before, or?
I can...
It was before my time, it was then, yeah.
I can respond to that. We believe that the 2010 census was much more accurate than the 2000 census, where it really, in fact, we did an appeal at that point, Glenn, you might remember that, because, you know, it was clear that there was some neighborhoods that were missed. That appeal was unsuccessful, they don't work, you know, so in 2000, the, 2010, excuse me, the committee there was, we had SMSU represented on there, both the staff as well as students. We had members of various religious organizations that were represented as example, we had representatives from the seniors that were there, and there was, that's one of the reasons it was a large committee, because as Kyle said, you know, there's no real point in limiting the size of this committee, the more important point is, you know, to have full representation.
And the state demographer's office, who's, that would be the local representation on behalf of the, working with the Census Bureau, has provided, or has tons of training materials and tools that we can use at the CCC level to, so we don't really have to recreate the wheel, we can use what's being provided to us, so that's, it's been really helpful.
Do we have a list of duties and responsibilities that, when people apply, they know what they're getting into and what's expected of them?
It would be on the, it could be attached to the application, it's what, again, it's a tool provided by the state demographer's office.
Okay.
What a CCC is, what you're getting into, what the purpose is, what we're trying to accomplish, yes, so yes, there would be something provided.
Okay, thank you.
Any other input? Any other discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Can you repeat the, I heard the motion again?
Jim seconded. Right?
Sir, I said it.
Jim made it.
Did you get that?
Yep.
Okay, so now we'll open the vote. We close the voting, and that motion does pass. Thank you, Kyle. So we'll move then to the, consider the resolution authorizing the execution of the MinDOT Airport Maintenance and Operations Agreement. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a real nice reimbursement for expenses that we have on an annual basis at the airport. They don't include anything that we have a separate agreement for, like crack ceiling or runway improvement, but it does include salaries, operational costs, maintenance costs, snow removal costs, all of that, and you can see it's fairly significant. It's grown to, it says $91,027 per year for a two-year period, so it is significant, and we certainly would recommend approval.
Any questions?
Glenn, just a question with the, I know I had a prior council meeting, we talked, I think about the lights, and we are only going to have that inspected for one more year?
Uh-huh.
So we find somebody new, will that be included also in the maintenance part?
If in fact, it's not participating, and it's an expense that we have, we include it.
Okay. By the way, did we find anybody?
And we're always over that amount that is allowable.
Okay.
So we've never in the past had to search to find the amount to ask for it back, so.
I move the resolution.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion passes. Agenda item number 11, this is, or excuse me, agenda number 12, is the Runway Crack Phil T. Hanger Apron Seal Coating Project. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is one of those that I've not warned you, informed you about over the last few months, when money isn't available until the end of the fiscal year, and all of a sudden, they come up with additional funding. However, in this case, it's actually, they'd like to move their 2020 funding to 2019, and this happened, you can see the date of the email that we got, and we need to have everything put into place, including the acceptance and the approvals by the council prior to next week, or by next week. So that's how fast it happens. We tried to give you an example of what the resolution would say, but we don't have the actual resolution from the state at this time. Hopefully, we'll have it by next week, and we couldn't wait until the following council meeting. So this is for 70% of the $50,000 for maintaining the runways. So it was $50,000, $35,000 state and $15,000 locally. It's in our current budget as well, but we had to wait for the authorization by MinDOT. We would certainly recommend approval, being the money is available, and we have been made the offer by the State Office of Aeronautics.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve executing the resolution agreement with MinDOT for 70%, MinDOT 30%, Marshall City financing with a maximum of $50,000 for crack sealing. If I understand this right, we're set up to restripe, too, where we certainly don't want to restripe before we do crack seals, so...
Correct.
The two kind of fall into place, too, so it's a domino.
I'll second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Now, discussion on the motion.
How often do we have to re, to do this?
We do it annually. In our CIP, it shows it every five years, but when, once it's in the CIP, it can be moved around based upon available funding, so we will probably be submitting another request for 2020 for additional crack sealing and sealing, depending... and sealing, depending upon what's available. But once that crack sealing is done, for for that portion of the airport, usually it's three to five years before it's done again. Depends upon the year and the condition, but it's not every year. But next year, we'll probably have another request. Just, we won't be, we won't be able to do all the cracks. We actually bid this by the pound, and we list the length of cracks and generally the width of the cracks when we ask for the proposals, but we maximize the poundage. When they run out of $50,000 worth of work, we're stopped, because we're not going to pay 100% of the overage.
For just from my education and knowledge...
Yep.
We provide, the city owns that airport, correct?
Yes.
100%.
100%.
With businesses that are out there, and businesses that frequently hangar their planes and use it, are they charged a surcharge to help offset the cost?
They do not. They they're charged rental for the hangar and then all other expenses, really. We have no landing fees. We don't have any other fees for them. It's a great deal for a private pilot to be, or or a company to build a hangar out there. You either pay rent for a T-hanger, or you build your own hangar, and that can be done through the city as well, over a long-term term agreement. But the fuel, the fuel flows that Midwest Aviation takes are theirs. They're given the rights to the fuel sales for the airport. We do not even take a fuel tax from that.
However, we should add, the improvements, like the one we handled in the previous agenda item, that is funded by aviation tax.
Yes, it is.
Aviation fuel tax.
Yep, and registration.
We do get a benefit from that.
And that's statewide.
Right.
But we don't charge them for landing here, for instance. And we're the highest occupancy of our T-hangers we've had in the last 20 years. So it's good occupancy right now. I think there's one left that we have city equipment stored in. But if it, if there was the demand for that one, we'd move the stuff out somewhere else.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Lost my vote. Right, oh, there we are, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass.
Just missed it. I'm gonna... Okay, sorry. Yep.
Okay, so the vote's recorded. That vote, the motion passed unanimously. We'll move then to agenda item number 13. This is consider approval of the labor, labor agreements between the City of Marshall and LELS, Local Number 245 with us, Sheila Dubs. And as we start out, I believe, Sheila, this is our last contract?
It is.
So thank you and City Administrator Hanson, as well as the the other staff that supported the work in finalizing these negotiations with several collective bargaining groups. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The existing labor agreement with this group, LELS Police Supervisors Unit, did expire on December 31st, 2018. City staff have reached a tentative agreement with this union on contract terms for a new three-year agreement. The term of that would be 2019 through 2021. I will briefly summarize the contract amendments proposed this evening, and then if you have any questions, I would open it up for Sharon, myself, or Jim to help answer. We have, as I mentioned, a tentative agreement, so you'll notice the duration on the cover page, and Article 28 is a three-year contract. The rest of the articles I'll go through in order. In Article 5, in the Proposed Union Security Amendment, this is a technical change relating to the payment of dues by union members. This language is proposed by the city, as recommended by our labor attorney, and as a result of legal action by the the courts earlier in 2018, I believe. In Article 12, the Insurance Clause, this is just simply amended to reflect the contract duration, no other language changes. In Article 13, the contract would newly reference the addition of an Appendix B, which is an equipment item list. The Director of Public Safety and the Sergeants of this group worked together on the equipment listing. Every item on this list has already been standard issue for each of the employees working in a sergeant position. There are no new items on this list. This appendix would simply serve to provide both the city and the union with a list of what the city provides. In Article 15, the Vacation Clause, the city agreed to the deletion of a clause that restricted employees from using their vacation accruals in the first six months. This amendment is also consistent with the Patrol Officers Agreement. It's also consistent with our Personnel Policy Manual. No employee is currently restricted in vacation use in their first six months of employment. The other language change proposed in this section does require an employee to provide a two-week notice prior to resignation or retirement, in order for that employee to be eligible to receive their accumulated vacation pay at retirement or resignation. Again, this language is consistent with that approved by the council with the non-union and the AFSCME group. This language was requested by the city to discourage employees from giving us less than a two-week notice at the retirement or resignation. In Article 17, this is severance pay. This amendment terminates each new employee's eligibility for severance pay effective January 1st of 2022 for this bargaining unit. This clause is consistent with the Personnel Policy Manual, which relates to non-union employees, as well as the AFSCME unit employees, both of which hired after 2016. Now, we had direction from the council just prior to that, to try to achieve this for each of our bargaining units, so we are well on our way with one to go on this. For Article 20, Leaves of Absence, the language proposed here is consistent with that requested by the other LELS group, the Patrol Officers. So this language references three laws, which are applicable to employees requesting a leave of absence, and that would be the Family and Medical Leave Act, the Parental Leave Act, and the Women's Security Economic, Women's Economic Security Act, excuse me. The consideration for approval or denial of these leaves would be continued to be administered in accordance with both state and federal laws, as we do today. The language does not add any additional benefits to this group of employees. What it does is allows employees to be more aware of the available options to them, and gives them a title, a name of a law, to go and look at what their options are in addition to coming to me. In Article 22, the Overtime Clause, these amendments eliminate a sergeant's ability to accrue compensatory time. All overtime would be paid on a bi-weekly basis for this. For the Wages Clause, which is in Article 25 and in Appendix A, the general wage increase package, the 2% general wage increase for 2019, 3 1/4% for 2020, and 3 1/4% for 2021, are the same increases that the council has approved for both Patrol and the AFSCME bargaining units in the past. The market adjustment is the only difference in this three-year wage package, with a cost impact of just under $3,000 for 2019. The market adjustment was tentatively agreed to by staff in exchange for the union agreeing to eliminate compensatory time eligibility and severance pay benefits for its employees, both of which presents a fiscal savings to the city. The proposed contracts, contract reflects an increase in shift differential, also from 30 cents to 50 cents an hour, and this is consistent with the increase approved in the Patrol Agreement earlier this year. The cost increase of this from 30 to 50 cents per hour is approximately $170 per year. Also in that section, we're proposing deletion of the Field Training Officer Clause. The sergeants actually oversee the FTO program. They do not actually act as field training officers, so the the union was agreeable to deleting that clause. Lastly, there is a memorandum of understanding. This has been consistent with our contracts, I'm going to say, for probably the past five years, probably maybe even longer than that. The council has consistently approved for all of our bargaining units to have an effective date of the proposed wage schedule to include the first of the day of the pay period, that includes January 1, just for ease of administration for our payroll department. Jim Marshall, our Director of Public Safety, is here this evening, and he is in support of this agreement. Sharon, Jim, or I would certainly be open to answering any questions that you have.
Thank you, Sheila. Questions? Now that I entertain a motion...
I move approval of the agreement.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion on the motion?
Again, I voiced this concern in the past, that I would like to see the city move towards smaller steps, but more steps, and I hope in future negotiations, we'll be looking at that. Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. The motion does pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move then to the next agenda item. Agenda item number 14, Consider Appointments to Various Boards, Commissions. The earlier this evening, the, as well as two weeks ago, the council did meet and in special session interviewed applicants for various boards and commissions, and based on those interviews and applications, I would recommend that Kathy Lee be appointed to a first term on the Planning Commission, Amanda Schroeder be appointed to a first term on the Planning Commission, and that Tony Schatzko be appointed to a first term on the Economic Development Authority. I offer that as a recommendation. Entertain a motion to affirm.
I'll make that motion.
So I move, or seconded...
Motion by Jim, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion does pass. We'll move then to Commission Board Liaison Reports. The Regional Development Commission meets this Thursday for their monthly meeting, and they have their annual meeting the second Thursday of July, and I believe all of the council members did receive that information. If you so chose to to attend that, it's held in, this year, it will be held in here in Lake, no, it'll be held in Curry, Minnesota. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Airport Commission met last week, and we took action on the major topics of that, so nothing additional to report.
Steve?
We met with the Community Services Advisory Board, and there was a lot of discussion regarding the pool. There'll be more to come on that, but they've got a plan. Consultants have come and evaluated our pool. Our pool is approaching 50 years old, and it's in dire need of updating, completely overhauling it. We are losing 14,000 gallons of water a day in leakage, which is ridiculous, especially when, I mean, this year, we probably have enough water, but most years, we don't have a lot of water on this table, and we're losing it. So we need to strongly, I would say, we don't even need to strongly, we need to fix this thing. So there'll be some more ideas coming up. We're going to have a tour of the Community Services Board and Council coming up later this summer, and I encourage everybody to consider that closely, because a pool is a good thing to have in a community. Yeah, it doesn't get used all year. It's a, but it's a great thing and a great community asset when you have it, and it's a great focal point for kids, and it's a safe spot. So we've got a really nice facility now, but it's showing its age horribly. It needs to be updated. So our EDA did have an emergency special meeting on Monday that I was not able to attend to, because I was seeing patients.
Glenn?
Planning Commission meets tomorrow. Housing Commission met yesterday, and last, or a couple meetings ago, I think, for City Council, I talked about a possible funding change for Marshall Public Housing, and the director went to a conference regarding this, and at our next meeting, we're going to have a webinar that'll last 30 to 35 minutes, and it's going to look at the different options for funding for public housing. And again, this is something we can choose to do or not to do, is the changing our, the way we fund public housing in Marshall here. And anyway, there's an invitation from the Public Housing Commission for any of us. If you want to come to that meeting and view the webinar, it'll be 30 to 35 minutes. Our meeting is on June 10th at 3:30 PM. That's in the Parkview Apartments office, so...
That was yesterday. That was yesterday.
Oh, okay. I haven't looked at the wrong one here. It'll be the second Monday in in July, which, one, two, is that July 9th or something? I think maybe July 9th then.
July 9th.
July 8th, I think. July 8th.
That'd be the same as our Ways and Means.
Yeah, I think it's July 8th on a Monday. Sorry about that.
Right.
Anyway, 3:30 PM, Parkview Apartments in the office. Thank you.
So Glenn, if it's a webinar, it's streamed? So we should be able to view it remotely?
He didn't mention that.
Well, you should be able to...
I would think so.
Log on the same as you can log on there, so...
Yeah, I can get you the information.
That would be great.
Okay, thank you.
And then likely it would be recorded too, I would imagine. So, I mean, the presenter would would record it.
Right, right.
Okay. John?
First of all, the EDA meeting, Steve mentioned, we had a special meeting on Monday, selling off eight lots out of Parkway Addition, so those are going for affordable housing. MMU has not met yet this month, so that meeting is coming up. I did want to talk a little bit about one other committee that I'm on, trying to keep it here on my screen. That was several months ago, was appointed to the Race Equity Cohort for the City of Marshall, Mayor, and this is, League of City is partnering with the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, or GAR, to train a cohort for advanced race equity. There's a number of us that have been in the training meetings, been meeting past several months, and we are starting to formulate a plan for considering the race equity aspects of the city. And just interjecting here, Kyle can correct me on some of these things wrong, because Kyle is also part of that group, along with Sheila, and we've got several represent, representatives throughout this community, which is nice. It's really our intent to start a review of the new and existing ordinances with the former group that's representing the various cultures within the city, and ask that this group to review the ordinances, and of course, starting with the new ones rather than starting off going through all the old ones. But look at them to ensure that there's no unintentional racial or cultural biases built into the ordinance, and we would ask that to review the ordinances prior to any city council approval, and then make the recommendations as part of the public hearing before the voting. Part of this, we're trying to start basically slow and easy, because many of these individuals come from an experience where, personal experience where their former government was not only good to say unfriendly, in certain cases, they were trying to kill them, and that's why they're here. So just saying, okay, please join a committee that's part of the city, you know, that's maybe uncomfortable for them at this point. So we're trying to make this a fairly informal but yet effective group, to try to slowly bring them along into working with the government, learning what community does, and getting involved in that. And we want to make sure that we're inviting each of the cultures, and I would suspect that at some point, this group would become possibly a commission of the city, or an ad hoc committee of the city, but for now, we want to keep it informal, so no one feels intimidated by coming in on this, and we do hope to form this group over the next several months, and to start working with them, and really kind of let them find their own way as forming an advisory group for the city. So there's more to come on that. We're kind of struggling ourselves getting through this process, and... We're kinda struggling ourselves getting through this process and understanding, you know, we've got the advantage that, you know, we have been part of the majority for a while, and it's hard to put yourselves in the shoes of somebody that's in a minority. Although census, as we're gonna probably find out soon enough, says that in probably the next 10 years, you know, white Anglo Saxons are probably going to be the minority around in the area, so. We're trying to bring these people in to give them an experience with the government, review what we're doing to give them input into it, and to make sure that what we're doing isn't something that isn't appropriate for their culture or whatever, and if so, to bring that to our attention. Hopefully that covers it well enough, and if you've got any questions, I'll let Kyle answer.
Thank you, John. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Police Advisory Board will be meeting, or conducting interviews on Friday for the corporal positions. Library Board met last evening, we had a pretty spirited meeting. Just to bring the council up to date, they're glad that school is out, school is over, because during the last week of school, they did have some significant issues with some, our director, Michelle, says some group of about 30 to 35 kids. A couple instances, they had to call the police department. One, they had to call the police department and the ambulance because a small individual got hurt, so they're gonna be requesting a meeting with the library staff, the school staff, the city and PD, to discuss these issues prior to school commencing next fall. Michelle made a point that there is one young gentleman that is the leader, and he'll go face to face with anybody, anywhere, anytime, and she's afraid of what he's doing in our community. So, it's a situation I think that you should all be aware of, and again, the incident reports were, with the library staff did a good job. We had a second look at the proposed 2020 budget, and the county commissioner, the liaison, and myself, and the director, and the board director will be meeting on that, I think, next week to discuss that. They're gonna put off, on a van, because they're looking at maybe ordering a, or putting in requests for a specialized van, and you probably see some of them around town that the plumbers and the carpenters use, it's a little bit bigger van. Their passenger van that they have now is not adequate, and she said, Michelle says, they don't even put it out in the wintertime because it's really an unsafe thing. They did put out their new calendar of events for the months of June through August, and that's been well received. The other thing they talked about is that they're starting to see some issues with the building, because the building is 10 years old, and upkeep and repairs and things, so be aware that that thing, that could happen, so. And that's all I have on that, and CDB has not met, so.
Okay. Jim?
The Community Center met last week, I wasn't able to attend, and my other committees did not meet.
Okay, we'll move then to council member individual items. Jim, let's start on your end.
I just have a couple things. I just want to say, the assessing departments in my neighborhood, and Carol came over, and it's been years since I've had him in my house, and she was very professional. They've not here, but I just want to give them a shout out, that as they come to your houses, they're very professional, very good. The other thing, I've been kind of pondering how I should address it, you know, earlier in our meeting, I believe we had one of our staff member get put on the spot, and I think we need to respect our staff members at our meetings, and I think, and I'm gonna ask as a council member, ask our council members, giving them a longer notice, a 24 to 40-hour notice, 24 to 48-hour notice with questions, I think is more appropriate than three hours, simply because I'm a busy person too. You give me something, and I'll use my banker for example, I'll use, you know, I'll call him and say I want something in three hours. They'll say, Jim, it's not gonna happen. I'll maybe get it to you in a day or two. We need to respect their time, and I know that they have a lot of demands on us, and respect their time so we can get the correct answers and get it done right. But we also need to respect them in a public forum. I don't believe that happened tonight. So, and that's all I have.
Okay, Russ?
Councilman Schaefer, I think, brought up at our last meeting about some of the issues we're having around town with, how should I put this, discarded items, furniture, whatever it used to be, and I know we briefly just brought it up at a Ways and Means committee meeting, and I think maybe that's something that we should maybe take a look at, is having a citywide cleanup day, and just, I'm not saying we have to do it, but take a look at how it, how other cities have done it, what the cost is, who pays the cost, what's picked up, what's not picked up, because I'm starting to see some couches and chairs sitting on the boulevards too, and marked free, and they've been there, sitting there for, you know, a couple of weeks now at least, so. Again, it's something that we don't have to address today, but maybe in the future we should take a look at that.
No, Glenn, I remember when I was on planning and zoning, didn't we address that in an ordinance? Because I remember on planning zoning, we, because I brought that up, these couches that get put out for free, that there's a short time period they can be out, it's less than 24 hours, I believe, they can actually sit out according to ordinance.
Yeah, it's a short period of time, and we take complaints, or if we see them, we'll send a letter out.
So we're going out, if you see them now, then you're sending.
The other thing that we might want to do is talk to Quentin, and maybe they can use some of those couches for fire training, I don't know, you know, when they have.
Prohibitive materials. Nope, 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 nope.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'll take that as an idea.
Lastly, I forgot, I have noticed that we're starting to see some, or I've started to see some campers parked on the street. One is a big motorhome that's parked out by a childcare center on Canoga Drive, it's been sitting there for at least a good month or better, and the windshield is covered up, so I'm guessing that they're probably there for the summer months, and I'm, and I, you know, up on Horizon Drive, I see a fish house sitting on the street, and it's been there for at least a couple of weeks. So, not asking that, maybe just, we can do a little bit of enforcement on our ordinances. Thank you.
John?
Okay, just a little follow up on what Russ brought up as far as the cleanup. I did ask Kyle to check in. Pipestone just went through that, City of Pipestone just went through that recently, doing a cleanup, and maybe they've got some ideas, plus an idea what the expenses are for doing that. Also, part of the discussion goes along with it, apparently, was talked about that there may be some refrigerators out there, the doors have not been removed, and that's a very dangerous situation, and we should really address that separately. I don't know if it starts with a letter from, or legal, or just a complaint coming, we know specifically where they're at, but that's something that we should get rolling, if we know of them, turn them in, so that we can get them notified, at least get the door removed, because that's a dangerous situation with kids playing around. Or chain them, or something to the effect that they, somebody can't crawl inside and have the doors closed on them. So, that's it.
Just wanted to, some piece of input on the communities that do have a citywide, like junk collection. Most of those cities, as I've looked into this, have organized garbage collection, so they, they have a mechanism for, for providing the, well, for paying for it, whereas we don't. We have, you know, private enterprise and competitive that are doing it for a business, so that's, as we research that, that will be probably one of the issues that will separate the way we do it from some other communities.
What, and the other issue is, you talk to those communities, Pipestone's a couple thousand, Gant is 400, we're a community of 14,000. I think you're gonna see this as a huge line item, because I visited Ritter's about that, or Southwest Sanitation and Waste Management, we're both out there, but they said you have to man those dumpsters, or you end up with appliances, and then you're out there, somebody's out there sorting them. You're looking, I'm guessing in Marshall, if we dig into this, you're probably gonna look at $40,000, $50,000. So, just to be aware, if we do it, you're gonna have a number.
We need to find out what the cost is, right?
This would look real similar to doing disaster recovery after a flood or a tornado, and I'm telling you, you better plan ahead, and once you start that, it's awfully hard to turn it off too. So you need to do your collection point where you can secure it, because people will think, oh my God, that's gonna run a while, and then it's amazing how much stuff they, somebody was gonna put in the grove that showed up in town at their buddy's house, and it's just, I mean, I'm all for cleaning it up, but I kinda think we gotta get back to property owner responsibility and, and help encourage that, but I think a citywide funded is gonna, it's gonna put a couple percent on our levy.
The city did something similar to this in, was it 96, after the tree streets flooded in the basements the first time? I remember it, because we used the dumps, we parked them on the edge of the blocks there, and you're correct, Craig, it started out with good intentions. It worked well for the first couple of days, and it was just kinda like, let's clean the garage out, let's clean, I mean, so it has been done in Marshall, it was back in 96, does that sound right?
It's, yeah, I kinda forgot about that, but yeah.
Yes, it was done.
Thanks for reminding me.
Probably no different than the tree dump, people taking stuff out there.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of to go back and to continue on to this, and I appreciate the discussion and the observations, and, I mean, I think, again, there's two things that I want to see us really look at hard, and I don't know what the final answer is, and I've had conversations, I've had a landlord, I actually approached my wife and I last night, we were out for a walk, and made some good points about their consideration and the difficulties that, that the landlords have managing the problem with the tenant, and, and my point back again is, I think the city's reach-through is only to the property owner, we don't manage who the tenants are. So this is a, it's a hard problem, and I get that, and I have a lot of empathy for the, for the landlords too, so I hope as we deal with the immediate symptoms of a problem, we figure out that mechanism, and one of my thoughts again is, is that we rely right now, system wide, on the, on neighbors making complaints about their neighbors, or citizens against citizens, and, and that's fine, you know, but the other part of that is, is we have a very intelligent and compassionate staff, and I think as staff see it, we should allow them to bring those lists in and consider that a complaint too. I don't want to make them the yard cops, but by the same token, if you drive through an alley, or on a street, and for two weeks straight you see TVs or appliances sitting out there, that's long enough to make a complaint. I don't think we need to have the neighbors get so irritated. I actually had some very positive feedback from the last meeting, you know, from some of the folks that had watched, and, and that's very encouraging too, and it's, it's kinda cheering it on that, you know, please move forward on this, and, and I think we all want that, and I think part of it too is a communication to people that come again from maybe different cultures, you know, John talked about fear of, of some of our, of our new residents, because they don't understand the, how, how we work, you know, they come from a different culture. Well, I think there's a misunderstanding that if you put it to the curb, the refuse company's gonna come out and load everything you put on the curb in the back of their truck, and that's not how it works, and I think some of that onus, and I, in the lively conversation that I had last night with one of the landlords, you know, put that back on them too. You've got to communicate with your tenants too, as a landlord, and let them know what the expectations are, and then I think hopefully this goes to the Legislative and Ordinance Committee, and we figure out some recommendations, look at what we have, are there other tools we can put in there, and, and hopefully, thoughtfully, get, you know, maybe some better tools that work for the landlords too, that we can help prevent this.
And when you address landlords, since I am a landlord, and I'll say, one of my pet peeves is folks who put furniture on the curb that sits for free, because some landlord isn't paid to get rid of that furniture. And that's when you look at the ordinance, is to stop that, because you're taking furniture from, my, let's say I put my couch out there for free, Russ is a landlord, he's gonna pay to get rid of that, because it's gonna end up in somebody else's house, and they're not gonna throw it away because they got it for free. So, if it comes to a stop, it needs to stop completely, so it doesn't transfer furniture down and.
Yep. There again, I think that's a great job for legislative and ordinance.
I think it is too.
I am not either. Thank you.
Anything else, Craig?
No, thank you.
Steve?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Glenn?
Okay, I have three items. One is, a resident contacted me about trash in, in somebody, in a neighbor's property, and I contacted Glenn, and he took steps, he went out and inspected the property, and another neighbor evidently had his contact at Illid Goodman, and he actually wrote a letter. So, when complaints are raised by neighbors, action is taken by the city, and I want to thank both you and Illid for the actions you've taken regarding this matter, because it is a matter that concerns neighbors, and, you know, citizens of Marshall. The second item I wanted to mention is that I have a CPA license, and as part of the requirement to keep my license is I have to have 120 hours of continuing education every three years. The last week in June, I will be attending a week-long conference in Wyoming, and by attending the conference, I'll get 40 credits of continuing education credits, and that's the good thing. The bad thing is I won't be here for that meeting, so the meeting on the 25th may go smoother than the normal.
Is that a joke?
That's a joke, yeah.
It's a joke.
You gotta tell us it's a joke, remember?
The other thing is, I just want to make sure that I explain things from my point of view. I had concerns about some of the, the policy, for fund policy, and as a matter of courtesy, I went to Annette before the meeting. I could have brought these issues to the meeting itself, and presented them to everyone. I thought I'll go to Annette and present these items to her, and explain it, and say the reasoning behind it, and I thought the meeting would go more smoothly that way, and I thought she should know about these changes ahead of time. So I took the courtesy of meeting with her before the meeting. After the meeting, I said, well, I've got these on a Word document, I can even send them to you, with, on an email. Would you like me to do that? And I did. I had them all typed up, and I sent them as an email to her three times, because I had some corrections to make, but, and at the meeting, it was my understanding that she thought the recommendations that I was making were good recommendations and would be implemented in the policy. That was my understanding, and so I didn't bring it up as a committee meeting, I thought as long as she's agreeable to these changes, why, why need to bring them up? So there was advance notice, and I didn't have to go to her and meet with her individually before the meeting.
But there wasn't communication of the committee, and the recommendation did come from the.
I think at the meeting, I said there were some, there were some recommended changes, she announced that, and it was my understanding that we were gonna approve it based on some changes to what was presented to us.
That they did.
That was, that was my understanding, and maybe other people understood it differently. So, that's why, when I came to the meeting tonight, it's our last opportunity to address this policy, and so that's why I brought up these concerns. And I'm, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anybody here, and I tried to be nice to Annette, and do it in a proper way, and give her advance notice. I thought I think, did everything properly, I assumed that she would share her information with the city administrator, and so I tried to do my best, and evidently there was a lack of communication here, and I'm not trying to impose my will on the committee. I assume that the changes that would be recommended would be satisfactory to the committee, and I even brought copies of them, my recommended changes, to the committee, and I would have handed them out if I thought there was any concern about those policies. And so there was a misunderstanding evidently between Annette and myself as to what was being approved and what was gonna change, and the only reason I brought these issues up tonight is because we're gonna approve it, and before it's approved, I wanted to know, everyone here on the City Council, they know that there were some problems, I thought, I saw with the policy, and I thought we should correct them. And so it's not a matter of being disrespectful. I mean, she came up here, I asked questions, I made points, I don't consider that disrespectful. And I resent the fact that people up here are insinuating that I'm somehow disrespectful to the staff. I tried in many different ways to accommodate, and I didn't go to the city administrator over Annette, I went to Annette personally to deal with this, and I assumed that she would share this information with the city administrator. So I tried to do what was right, I tried to be polite and respectful, but at the same time, if, if we're voting on a policy that I have concerns about, and concerns that I have conveyed to staff, I think it's proper and legitimate to bring it up at this meeting.
And I think the other issue that we will talk about is really a code of conduct as far as how we communicate, how we, both in the committee as well as on the council level, I think we need to do that as soon as possible. With that, I.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one other item. Whoops, John just had one.
I would move the computer here.
And thank you.
I know we appointed three individuals to various boards and commissions this evening, but I know we have a general viewing public, just to remind them, we do have 10 openings yet on various boards and committees, and you were probably gonna bring that up, but just, you know, we do encourage the public to get involved in their, in their city government somehow, and we, we're still looking for 10 people or 10 individuals, so.
Thanks, Russ.
Sorry to take your, your stage if I do.
No, thanks, Russ. That was actually a good reminder for me, so thank you for that. As Russ has mentioned, we do have openings on various boards and commissions, on the Adult Community Center Commission, we have two openings, on the Airport Commission, we have three openings, on the Cable Commission, we have two openings, on the Community Services Advisory Board, we have two openings, the, the Marshall Municipal Utilities Commission, we have one opening, the, and on the Police Advisory Board, we have one opening. So, we have always benefited as a city from volunteers that are, step forward and serve the city, so, thank you. With that, I'm gonna move to the staff report. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, we had a little bit of warm weather last week, and construction got underway, but I understand it's still raining, so.
It's pretty good right now.
All, all of our construction, of course, is based on weather permitting. We did intend to close Colony Road 33, Erie Road, tomorrow morning. We'll postpone that a day, and ADM is well aware of it. We keep in contact with them, as well as all of our normal emergency services, so that's one of the major things. The Emerit Center project is coming right along, still on schedule, but hopefully they'll continue. Commerce Park is almost complete. I think we'll be done with Commerce Park within the next month with all the cleanup and things like that, so that's a, that'll be a real important project to get complete as well. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As alluded to earlier, the EDA special meeting yesterday morning to authorize the sale of eight lots to UCAP, they will be, that's on a very fast track. They hope to not only get approval to sell, but also to conclude the sale by Friday of this week. They've got a contractor who's lined up, who has some soil corrections to do, but they hope to have six houses under construction very soon. And we also got a request today for funding for 2020 for UCAP. They want to buy five additional lots. They're looking for construction on those five next year, plus the final two that they bought this year. So, things are happening out there. And the biggest news from last week was that the US Army Corps of Engineers did grant to the City of Marshall Nationwide Permit Number 39, authorizing the place of fill and dredge material into a wetland. Found that the aquatic resource functions of that wetland would just minimally be impacted by a construction of the Action Manufacturing Expansion Project, and that wetland can be filled, and construction can occur over the top of that. And the compensatory mitigation plan, as submitted by your city attorney, did not require any additional wetland credits to be purchased. Initially, the Corps of Engineers said, well, good job, you purchased state wetland credits, but we don't count those. You need to buy core credits. But we got around that, and so, no additional funds were expended, and that transaction has closed, the deed has been reported, payment has been received, and you should be soon receiving a construction request from Action Manufacturing for expansion of their office facilities, is what they're looking to do now. They need more office space. So, that is, that's good news, and we're very close to finalizing the cable TV franchise agreement.
Very good. Thank you, Dennis.
Awesome.
We'll move then on with the agenda. You have the administrative report, anything to add to that? You also have the information items and the listing of upcoming meetings, which brings us to Agenda I of number 21. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting.
Jim did not vote.
Come on, let me vote.
Jim, Jim, all right, you stay here then, bud.
Afraid you're going to get wet?
Yes.
Yeah. Kyle, you'll record his vote. All, that motion does pass, we're adjourned.